I really appreciate your coming out in the rain. So we're going to spend the first hour talking about the questions that came in through our website, and then I'll ask people to come up to the microphone and ask questions. I'm as enthusiastic as you to hear from our city agencies, but I just want to address a couple of issues that I've been dealing with over the last month and bring you up to speed on them. Today, the New York City Council Transportation Committee had a long hearing about Vision Zero, where we talked about 22 different bills that have been introduced. The goal of the hearings is to have a response to the mayor's Vision Zero plan and really fill it out with serious legislation. I'm proud that my bill, which is going to be called Cooper's Law 171A, has been included and has been enthusiastically supported by the administration. This law would suspend a taxi driver's license, taxi license, should they kill or critically maim a pedestrian or a biker upon, if they're crossing the street. So if the taxi driver is speeding, if there is a failure to yield, or any other traffic violation, their taxi driver's license would be suspended when the summons is put forward, and then there would be a trial, and if they're found guilty of that traffic violation, they would lose their ability to be a taxi driver, to have a license to drive a taxi. And I think that's going to go through. Last week, the, but if you're interested in following up on that, feel free to talk to me. We'll probably have it come out of the city council in the June stated meeting. Last week, the Land Use Committee moved, met, and approved the rezoning at 606 West 57th Street to make way for a 1,000-unit residential and first-floor commercial building. Prior to my election to the city council, it was approved by Community Board Four, Manhattan Borough President at the time, Scott Stringer, and current Borough President, Gail Brewer. There were requests for additional affordable housing and fewer parking spaces, and in my discussions with the developer, all of those things were addressed: additional affordable housing, affordable into perpetuity, 100 fewer parking spaces. But you should know that I am deeply troubled by the growth of residential buildings on West 57th Street in particular. I am exploring with my colleagues and the staff in the city council at City and at City Hall to put together a working group to address both the flaws in the seeker process and in the EIS that allows buildings like this to come in and be built without new schools or additions to other city services. I'm also working with them to try to set up a working group with the community to address the impact on this community directly over the next five years and the needs for additional city services that will be required. I will say, though, that I was able to achieve quite a bit more with the developer, and given the reality of its approval, I was able to get the developer to pay for and build out, and for the SCA to indeed lease space for a new pre-K that will go in the first floor of that building. And you should know, that's the only pre-K that will exist that's a public school in my district. So that was a big win for our community. We also got 10,000 additional square feet for middle-income affordable housing that will go into perpetuity. And I think when we talk about the New York City becoming a community of the very wealthy and the very poor, addressing the needs of middle-income New Yorkers has to be a part of the discussion, and I'm very proud that we were able to advance the ball in that area for our community. In terms of horse carriages, should that come up? You should know, I don't want them on the city streets. My position has been consistent for years, and I look forward to finding a way for those drivers to transition into equally well-paying union jobs. Unlike the horses, I would like to see more bicycles on the road, but they have to follow the rules of the road, and safety is paramount, and I think DOT is going to talk more about safety in a moment. If there are public school parents in the crowd tomorrow, I and other elected officials will be meeting with the Department of Education's New School Division to discuss a new school that will go into what is currently the Beacon High School building. It will be a new, there will be a new school to serve grades six through 12, which I know is very important to those parents who have children in the overcrowded middle schools now and are looking for a high school, or if you have your children in the overcrowded elementary schools and you're wanting to make sure your child gets a seat in a middle school. We are actively moving forward to make that happen for next, for school year 15. At our local public elementary schools, we do have some waiting lists, I think because of the new K-Connect program, and I'm hoping we'll be able to talk about that a little bit tonight. As some of you know, we had a win in the community with the Department of Homeless Services, who agreed to have the number of residents on West 95th Street at the homeless shelter there. I will not rest until we eliminate that homeless shelter. There's no reason that that one, that we need a homeless shelter and an additional one, we're well beyond our fair share on the Upper West Side. And I will continue to work to make sure that homeless shelter gets moved somewhere else. We do have an ongoing RAP problem, and I'm grateful that the Department of Health and Department of Sanitation will be talking about that tonight. And so with that, we're going to start. So if we could start with Con Edison, would you please explain the rate increase that occurred in February? This individual's bill went up $40, even though his usage did not increase.
Good evening. My name is David Gimmack. I'm the Director of Public Affairs for Con Edison. I want to thank Helen and Stephanie and her team for inviting us to be here this evening. It's kind of a interesting being on the stage. I feel like we're going to put on a show here, but I hope we're also able to answer some questions for everyone. With regard to this question, there was no increase in the Con Edison bill. In fact, we just reached an agreement with the State Public Service Commission and other parties, including the city, that there's not going to be any rate increase on the Con Edison bill, on the electric bill, for two years, and no increase on the gas and steam bills for three years. However, when you pay the bill, you're really paying three pieces. A third of the bill that you pay every month is for Con Edison, for where we deliver the power. A third is for taxes and fees that we basically collect on behalf of city and state entities and pass through, and a third is the supply piece. So the power plants, the power suppliers, we deliver the power, we charge the bill, we turn that money over to them, and it's a pass-through. And it's on the supply side, which in New York City is largely supplied, powered through natural gas, that you saw a spike in the cost. And that's because natural gas prices, as many people are aware, went up significantly over the winter. So there was a very high burden, both on people using gas for heating, and it affected the electric bill. Con Edison and other utilities have asked the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission to review the bills that were in place and to see whether or not there was anything out of the ordinary, and that matters under investigation by the FERC.
So again, David, what are you doing to limit the likelihood that the Upper West Side will experience a natural gas leak? Which is everyone's concern. I mean, it's very frightening what happened.
Absolutely. And anyone else who wants to join in, please feel free. But so for, gas safety is very important to us. It's our number-one priority. Safety in general for all of the work we do is very important. There are really four elements to what we do. The most important one is probably our education campaign and encouraging people, "When you smell gas, act fast." So you should call 911, you should call 1-800-75-ConEd immediately, and let someone know that you smell that. Don't call from your cell phone or from the phone. Leave the premise from where you are and go outside and make the call, just to be on the safe side. We have brochures, we translate them in many languages, we're on the website, we've done campaigns, and we understand we have to do a better job of getting that message out. The other piece that we do is we have what's called the Leak Mobile, which literally drives around the streets of New York and is checking for any release of methane gas. And so anytime that that identifies something, they go out and they make a determination on what that is. We do have a capital plan that includes replacing about 65 miles a year of existing gas mains and pipes that are in the ground throughout New York City and Westchester, and we're being very aggressive on that. And then the other element is, one of the biggest risks of any kind of utility getting hit by accident is when contractors are just digging in the streets. So if you've all seen those markings in the streets, various colors, and you wonder what those are, there is something called 811. And any contractor, whether it's working for the city, Con Edison, private contractors, they are supposed to call 911 before they dig, and we send out someone who marks up the street so it's clear from the coloring what, where the gas is, where the electric is, and that gets done within 48 hours of their call. So we promote that quite heavily with all contractors, anyone who might be excavating on the street, to make sure that any work that gets done is done as safely as possible.
Wow. Thank you very much. Department of Consumer Affairs. Yes, hi, sorry. This is Ricky Wong. Thank you for coming tonight. How can someone file a complaint about a specific vendor with the DCA? Who enforces complaints against street vendors, the DCA or NYPD?
DCA licenses general street vendors. These are the vendors that sell merchandise, non-food. And the way the 311 is set up, and there is an agreement between DCA and NYPD legal, that NYPD actually handles the enforcement of street vendors. So if you call into 311 and you file a complaint, it will go to the NYPD for enforcement.
Okay. Does NYPD want to mention as well?
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Captain Laren, 2-4 precinct commanding officer. That is correct in relation to street vendors. What our teams typically look for is a general vendor license if they're selling non-food articles such as t-shirts, hats, beads, toys, or any other articles of that nature. And also with food licenses, we would look for that from any meat truck or a hot dog truck, something of that nature. We also conduct joint operations that are previously announced with the Department of Health and Mental Health, and we go out on a predetermined date, and we sweep the major corridors in the neighborhoods. For instance, for us, it would be Broadway, Columbus Avenue, Amsterdam Avenue. And if we see that the vendor is not properly credentialed, instead of just giving them the summons, we actually take it a step further and seize all of the articles and keep them for forfeiture.
So Penny Ryan's here, which I'm so grateful you're here, Penny. Thank you. District Manager for Community Board Seven.
Thank you. Happy to be here. What kind of vendor are you talking about?
Books.
The books, okay. Because that's why I wanted to give this back to you. We have multiple book vendors, probably everybody knows this, from 72nd up to 74th Street. They store their books on the street, which they're not allowed to do. They cover them with plastic, and the 2O comes and confiscates them at least every other month. And they confiscate approximately 5,000, I don't know how it always, because it has to be 5,000, but that's what it ends up being, books. Now, when they do this, they have to bring PD legal with them, and they have to voucher every book, and they have to be able to offer them back to the book vendors. And if the book vendors are anyplace nearby and can say, "That's my property," then they can't take it. So it's a real problem about having regulations in place that would absolutely require that vendors have to remove everything from the street. And we have been asking to do this above 59th Street or above 72nd Street in more residential areas. So maybe there's something you could look into to get some additional regulation on this that would help the police.
Thank you. I look forward to working with you on that.
And the other thing that happens is by the time they confiscate the books, the community comes out and gives the vendors money and books to replace what was taken. So the community is very half-split on this, too. So it's a difficult situation.
And if I can add to that.
Please.
So book vendors actually don't require having a general vendor's license. They're actually protected under the First Amendment. They're vending materials of an expressive matter. Generally, they only have to have a certificate of authority, basically to collect sales tax. So there would be no licensure from DCA for those specific vendors, but they have to conform to general vending regulations as far as setting up, as concerned, the size of the table and how they're set up and everything.
So we've been joined by our State Senator Jose Serrano. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you very much, and council member. And I won't take up time, because this is a really important town hall that you've put together, and I want to thank you for all your work that you're doing in the community. And yeah, she's correct. I just drove in. This is my first stop coming back from Albany, and it was pretty rainy, but I was driving very happy, because we were able to finally pass a bit of legislation that is extremely important to the work that Councilmember Rosenthal and her colleagues in the city council, as well as Mayor de Blasio, have been fighting for, and that is Vision Zero. So we passed legislation authorizing New York City to increase its speed cameras by over 700%. And this is a huge victory for those of us on the West Side who care very deeply about pedestrian safety and making sure that cars slow down. So this is a major victory for the councilwoman and for the colleagues who have been working tirelessly, have been having a lot of public events and press conferences, and doing a lot of studies on traffic safety in and around. Very briefly, just as she's mentioned, I represent the Upper West Side in my 29th Senate District, as well as the East Side, Roosevelt Island, East Harlem, and the Bronx. This is a really important part of my district, and I couldn't be more pleased to have such a tremendous colleague in government as Helen Rosenthal. She's someone who I've come to know over the last year or so as an amazing advocate, and she brings an activist mentality to the job of being an elected official. And that is something that is so important, not just here in the Upper West Side, but it's important in places like the South Bronx and in East Harlem, where she's an advocate for the entire city. And she cares deeply about progressive issues. A town hall meeting like this is important, not just for the Upper West Side, but for all of us. And I think it's so impressive that you've been able to bring together this great array of governmental officials and agencies all in one place, because this is really about democracy at its best. You're bringing it to the people. I couldn't be happier for the work that you're doing, and it really is an honor and a privilege and a blessing to work with you. Thank you.
I appreciate that. So I see DOE has arrived, and here we have, would the DOE consider making primary day voting, which is now a regular school day, one of its professional development days, so that children do not need to be affected by the disruption and unsafe conditions created by voting when schools are open?
So regarding this specific issue, we are aware of the safety concerns, and we're working with our colleagues both at the NYPD and the Board of Elections to address them.
So I know it's really complicated, and it's layered, and I appreciate that. So maybe for folks at NYPD, I mean, for all of us who have spent time at the schools, it really is not a particularly safe condition, and one of the tricky things is, is that PD is really there for the election, to make sure, to watching, to make sure there's no election fraud. But they're not necessarily there to look out for the kids and see what's going on in the hallway when voters are coming in and walking through the hallway to get to the lunchroom.
We are in the throes of, I don't know if you guys have heard, but we're in the throes of negotiations, all about different things, and PD is a part of that, for sure.
You mean in labor negotiations?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
I want to say that, A, we 100% love PD and want to continue with PD and consider that a priority for us. I think Ben was trying to say that we have heard these concerns and that we are following up with the appropriate folks to figure out what's what. Additionally, I think that it's a case-by-case situation. I think some schools, I've heard, you sort of go into the auditorium, and it's not, you know, sort of a non-issue, and then other schools, you're walking through, and each school, as we each know, is so individualized and so built. So, A, I think we are going to follow up the way Ben has with the Board of Elections and with NYPD, to make sure that each case by case is taken seriously. And then additionally, we will make ourselves available to specific, school-specific, community-specific concerns, so that we can make that work, because we feel like anything is possible, and we can be flexible with that. But we don't want to just commit to necessarily saying, "Okay, we'll do a PD day, et cetera," for a primary day.
Sure.
But we hear your concerns, and we want to make them better.
Would it be all right, and we, my office could give you the list of schools that are having specific safety concerns?
Yes, that would be perfect.
Because we have a primary day coming up soon.
Yes, June 24th. And we want, yeah, so that would be really helpful. And then additionally, if you're meeting with those folks, or if you pull them all together, it would be really helpful for us to, you know, bring space planning in or to figure out what's what with Board of Elections as well.
Great. I'm looking at the PA presidents right now, and they're going to be eager to speak to you, and I'm the PA.
No, Sadie, I'm up here. Follow-up. We'll meet with you happily.
Great. Thank you very much. Now, if we could talk a little bit about K-Connect. Will the K-Connect kindergarten application model of this past year be used going forward? Will the chancellor consider revising K-Connect to allow for a greater connection to one zoned school? And to give you a little bit of context, we have the highest waitlist that we've seen at 199. PS75 also has a waitlist, so.
Yes. Yes, I think, A, you know, we walked into the administration, and it was like a moving train, right? I'm sure my colleagues in government can agree. We walked in, we couldn't press pause. So K-Connect was happening before our very eyes, and so we said that we would take this year to see how it goes, to review it. I'm sure that there are elements that we sort of surface level say, "It's online, it's something accessible, et cetera," but, you know, English language learners, immigrant families, access to computers, wireless, are people trained in the school on how to even apply? I mean, these are real questions and concerns that we had, walking in. So those are under review for the first year. Certainly, we want to see how it goes. And then certainly, in relation to the waitlists, you know, having 20 choices is just, in general, really overwhelming, and so I think we want to think, think a little bit more thoroughly, more thoughtfully about choice and what that means, especially as it relates to K-Connect and having all the choices in the world.
Right. It's, do you have a sense of timeline of when you're going to be making a decision about that?
Well, since the K admissions is happening as we speak, we want to sort of wait until this process over. What was really important to the chancellor is speaking to principals, you know, parents, of course, but principals as well, and saying, "What is this really doing?" Because I think some of the appeal, or surface appeal, was, "This is going to be easier for you." So we want to make sure that that's actually the case and follow up with principals who, you know, have had to go paper by paper and check addresses and do all that stuff. So that's very important to us, to make sure.
Right.
We don't want to make more work for folks.
Right.
Especially in making parents' lives, you know, more difficult, and already, sort of, transitions are always sensitive.
So we had a question. Is there a requirement to regularly inspect water tanks on top of buildings?
Good question. Thank you. With respect to water tanks, the Department of Health, if I may speak for the Department of Health, addresses things having to do with water, perhaps, the water quality or sanitation of that. Department of Buildings looks into the structural state of a water tank. So if you had concerns as to the structure, you would refer that to us, and we would go out and evaluate that structure on the roof.
Again, to the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene, why is there no grading system for the street vendors as there is for regular food establishments?
Okay, so I can take a stab at this question. Again, it's not my, it's not my actual program, but we do work closely with our food safety program. So basically, the answer is that our mobile food vendors are different in nature from restaurants. With restaurants, we permit them, and thus we inspect them every year as part of the permit. For the grading process, every restaurant is inspected once. They get an initial grade, they get an opportunity to have that, to fight that grade in a hearing. It's adjudicated, they get re-inspected, and then the grade is posted. The inspection process for a mobile food vendor is very different. Typically, the inspectors would go out, and if they saw violations on a food vending cart, they would give the violation directly to whoever was operating the cart at that time. So the inspection wasn't actually tied to the food cart itself. And that food cart wasn't being tracked systematically. The violation was issued on the spot. What the Health Department is trying to do now is start a program where you, the consumer, would be able to look up food carts and then identify any violations or inspection history for that food cart. And that data would be then posted online, so you could look it up the way you can in individual restaurants. But they're, they're working on making that data publicly available and adjusting the program, so that it would be more transparent for you to see.
Okay, great. We might have some follow-up with you on that. Is someone from HPD here? Yes, right, sorry. Thank you. Would HPD consider new policies and procedures for succession rights?
I believe the issue that we're talking about here is in the Mitchell-Lama Program, which is a state program for, originally designed for middle-income families. And HPD published some proposed changes to what the succession rights would be from one family member when they pass on to another family member, which is a right under the program. The proposal, which came out, included some narrowing of what relationships would be permitted. There was a public comment period, and HPD heard loud and clear the concerns expressed by the public related to that narrowing, particularly, I would say, the impact on gay, lesbian, transgender relationships. That was something we heard very clearly. And so at this point, there, we do not have a timeline for the release of a new set of proposed rules. We, again, are really wanting to get this right. We have a new commissioner who is going to be involved in reconsideration of this policy.
Terrific.
The direct answer is that we are considering it, but a new document is not imminent.
Okay. Sanitation. Can tenants participate in the new composting program without the building owner's permission if the super agrees to be involved? And I know this has come up because of a new composting program on West 83rd Street, which is so exciting, but unfortunately, there's one building where half the building wants it, half the building not so much.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Iggy Taranova. I'm with the New York Department of Sanitation, obviously. And I'm, thank you, council member, for having us here tonight. The answer is really no, because you need the building's permission to be part of it. It can't be half and half. You still can recycle organics through the green markets throughout the city, so you can bring them anytime you want to a green market, and they'll always take it. But a building has to be, has to enroll in the program for the whole building to be part of it. Then, once the building is enrolled, not everybody has to participate. Just, so everyone understands, not everyone has to participate, but the building has to be enrolled. It can't be without the building enrolling in the program.
Great. It really is an exciting new program on West 83rd Street. Penny, do you want to add in about that, about composting? Are there other streets or other ways, if other buildings want to get involved?
There, actually, I'll turn this over to Carolyn, but there are a number of buildings in this district, the larger buildings that are not part of block associations, and Carolyn can talk about the RAT study that goes with the blocks. So there are blocks, and then there are big buildings. And the larger buildings are doing very well with this program, and they really, really, really like it. So on 83rd Street, we're just hoping the rest of the buildings will come, you know, come on board. But 83rd Street is in the program now.
Yeah.
And what it means is, with rigid plastic recycling, once you take that out of the waste stream, what you're really left with mostly is organic waste. waste stream, what you're really left with mostly is organic waste. And through this program, you can get that recycled, and that means you really go to 0% garbage in the garbage stream, except for maybe little wrappers and things like that. All the schools in our district are part of this program, it's been very successful with the school community, a little bit of a problem with the after-school community, but the children are all learning this at school, so they're taking it home. So it's something that I hope if any of your buildings would be interested, you can contact my office or Carolyn's office, and we have contacted Sanitation who's running this program as well. But it's something really worth looking into, and it has a major economic benefit for the city in terms of not having to pay to export garbage to somebody else's landfill. And it also, there are some marketable benefits with this type of recycling.
So the Health Department became interested in the organics program offered by Department of Sanitation because, basically, the organic waste collected in households would be stored in these solid plastic containers with a tight-fitting lid rather than in plastic bags on the curb. And as many of you know, if you are walking home at night, the times and places that rats feed are typically in the garbage that's placed curbside by residential buildings. So we hope that by actually working, West 83rd was the first block that we picked to study, and our goal was to enroll every building in organics, the organics program on that block, and then study the block moving forward for a full year to see if rat activity over time decreased because the food was denied to those rats. And we'll, you know, we'll be monitoring, you may see me walking up and down that block, and others will be monitoring going forward.
Great, thank you very much. What action will DOT take to enforce existing bicycle regulations? Too many cyclists show an absolute disrespect for their own safety and that of pedestrians.
Well, we have several initiatives. In general, though, speaking with the behavior of cyclists, it is mainly the purview of NYPD to enforce cyclist behavior in terms of violating the traffic laws, in essence. What we do, though, in conjunction with PD, is we have several programs, one of which is a delivery cyclist initiative. Beginning last year, we started enforcing regulations in place for delivery cyclists that have to meet requirements. And along with PD, we initiated several, throughout the city, several different workshops for all the delivery cyclists or establishment that have delivery cyclists, and to train them in what is required for all delivery cyclists throughout the city. That means vests, identification, and obeying the proper rules of the road. We have inspectors assigned throughout the city that are solely devoted to monitoring these establishments, and if found in violation, it is the establishment owner who gets the violation rather than the cyclist who often is, you know, not being supplied these proper safety equipment such as vests and told that they have to ride, you know, obey the proper traffic rules. So we have many forums throughout the city to instruct delivery cyclists and their establishment owners how to obey those laws.
And what can be done about graffiti on the Upper West Side? When I called 311 to report graffiti on a private building, the city did not remove it.
There are lots of types of graffiti, and I'll just give you a quick summary of this. We recently got in requests about graffiti on DOT lampposts, and Josh and I are talking about this. It's a funding question. There used to be a contract where DOT would go around and not on, excuse me, not on complaints, but on a regular basis and repaint lampposts, and we're not sure if that still exists. Josh, do you know yet?
Last word I had was that there is a five-year rollover plan.
There is not, right? Okay. And DOT and Con Edison don't want any citizens painting these lampposts because of stray electricity, you could be injured. And so lampposts are out there that need to be cleaned up. The other question we've recently gotten is about US postal boxes, which are a real target for graffiti people. And those, you have to go to the post office, your local branch, and ask them to remove it, paint it, and bring it back. Now, that can take a little bit of time, and then everybody gets upset that they don't have their post, their mailbox, but it does, it does work, it just takes a little bit of time. Now, on private property, there are two ways that residents can go about having graffiti removed from private property. One is through Midtown Community Court, and I know the councilmember's going to be posting their contact information from what, an event we did on Saturday. But Midtown Community Court adjudicates misdemeanor violations, like, you know, turnstile, not paying your fare and going through the turnstile and things like that. So they're very minor offenses where people get six hours of community service. They have supervisors and managers, and they will come out on, for a six-hour window and paint over graffiti. And what's good about this is that they are supervised, and it is people from our community who would come back and serve the community. The other way to go about this is through your local precinct. The precincts have a program, the 2-4 works with their explorers, young people who are in the explorer program, and the precinct would provide supervision and materials to do this. Now, they need permission from the property owner, which sometimes can be problematic, and the community board can help with that as well. Captain, did you want to say anything?
Yes, like Ms. Ryan said, in relation to graffiti complaints, if anyone sees persons actually committing the act, we prefer if you dial 911 immediately. That way, we can respond on a priority level and try to apprehend these individuals. If the graffiti is already there, then a notification to 311 or to us at our telephone switchboard will log it in, will send that a team who will first photograph it and then send it to the Citywide Vandal's Task Force. They have a database where they can pretty much identify who the person was that committed this act. Once we record it on a complaint report and we get the approval of the property owner, we will seek out from local merchants, if they can donate the paint, that would be great. If not, we purchase the paint with our own petty cash funds, and our auxiliary coordinator goes out with the explorers. And typically, we try to do as many as we can on one outing. That's as far as our graffiti program goes, and we take it very seriously. It falls in line with all of our other quality-of-life initiatives, such as aggressive panhandling and things of that nature.
Thank you. Izzy, did you want to add?
Yes, on top of all that that you just heard, which is actually really good information, New York City does offer a graffiti-free program. If there's graffiti on your property, which by law you're not allowed to have, all you have to do is fill out a city waiver, which is allowing the city to come and either paint or power wash that property 100% for free. It's simple as that. Call 311, give them the address that there's graffiti on the property, that address comes automatically to my office, we will submit it through the system. If there's a waiver already on file, because they might have signed it last year or last week, and it got re-hit, we'll go back and redo the property 100% for free. If there is no waiver on file, we will send the homeowner a letter introducing them to the graffiti, letting them know they have it, and if they have, they have to have it removed. They have an option, either they do it themselves, or the city will do it for free, as long as they sign that waiver that the captain was just mentioning about getting permission to go onto the property. And it's a simple piece of paper that says, "We can't sue you, and you can't sue us." Simple as that. But we will either power wash your property or paint it 100% for free. You could do that via, online at NYC.gov, or 311, we'll take that complaint because it comes automatically to my office. Or you can download the form, fill it out, and mail it to me, and we'll put it through the system for you.
Wow, okay, thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Mark Dana, I live at 315 West 103rd Street in Manhattan, and I've been dealing with an issue of illegal construction for five years now.
Yeah.
Basically, because of--
315, right?
315, 315 West 103rd Street. My last name is D-A-N-N-A.
Yeah.
I live in the back, I've been there for 35 years. I used to be on what was the top floor. Five years ago, in January of 2009, and I will make this succinct, I'm a writer, in any case, and not a long one. In any case, basically what happened is, my landlord submitted permits which were approved by the Department of Buildings, so this is addressed to Mr. Munoz, and he basically lied, he said there was nobody in the building. Construction went forward, they added two floors on top of me, they also added a series of terraces behind me extending the building 15 feet into the backyard. So for five years now, I have been looking out from a cave. The building is here, my windows, all of my windows are 15 feet from the end of the building. There are concrete walls on both sides, or cinder block walls, I should say. There's a rotting wooden deck because rain still comes down through the incomplete roof that was supposed to have been fixed years ago, that has not been done.
Yep.
In fact, as I left, it was raining.
And I'm gonna--
Cut to the chase. In any case, what happened, also, this has never been told in, in, in public before. A few years ago, the, not only, first of all, the plan cannot be finished, the staircase cannot be made up to code, the only way they can build a staircase that is up to code is to build through my apartment. I was told that by my landlord two years ago, and DOB approved that plan. I've been very much living there, I am not moving, I've been there a long time. It seems to me that DOB is stonewalling, this has been going on for five years. Not only that, exactly a year ago, we, after four years of various politicians asking for a meeting with DOB, they finally met with a number of people. I was told on May 1st, exactly a year ago, at the community board meeting, I was told that DOB told these representatives of elected officials three things. Construction's going to move forward on this building soon, don't get in our way, there will be consequences. The DOB actually said this to these officials, that's what I was told at that meeting. They also told me there was a scenario where I could be kicked out of my apartment with no remuneration, nothing, booted out. So basically, what you've done is created a situation where the landlord is now harassing me, I have a harassment hearing in four weeks, and basically, five years now have gone by, I've had various people come to, from DOB, come to my apartment, said they would help including your Stephen Figurita, who was, who came, actually, on a rainy night two years ago, just like this, after Danny O'Donnell's town hall meeting.
I will definitely follow up with you directly. If, I may just say that the property at present, as you know, has a partial stop-work order due to the fact that they didn't have complete set of plans at, at the time of the inspection, and, and it will remain that way until they provide us with a whole set of plans. You did mention the issue of these stairs. These are plans that were presented by the owner of the building, the applicant of the project, and they can present plans to us that make those sorts of proposals. However, as we all know, they cannot continue the construction if it's not safe, and that is why that part of the project has not continued. The Department of Buildings does not sponsor or condone any sort of bad relations with tenants in the building. I have often been in conversations with the councilwoman's office and with her predecessor about this location, and we usually request and/or recommend that, recommend that you also seek other measures.
One of the things that we heard during campaigns on multiple times was, when you go looking at a store, you don't know the address. And it's a very frustrating process to try and find 217 Columbus Avenue when there's no notices on any stores that that address exists, so.
Is that Department of Buildings, or Penny?
No, with regard to, with the, what is called a building number, the building address, that is handled by the Department of, I'm sorry, by FDNY, and that's part of their code. It's FDNY's code, section 501, if you wish to follow up on that. There, there are other ways, just in case, if you want to, to make a complaint as for a building not having an address, but you're unable to locate it, you can locate at least the cross streets, and then that should help--
Okay, we'll call the fire department.
Yeah, but also, when you put that request in, also to 311, if you could let our office know and let us know the complaint number, and we can help you follow up on that.
You know that I'm very disappointed in your recent decision to encourage your council members, fellow council members, to approve the project at 57th Street. As you said, the wind was in the sail, but it was the last part of the ELLR process, and as a community, we're really depending on you to make a good choice for us. So now we're stuck with what's going to be the largest residential building in all of New York City on 57th Street, and many of you might know that the largest, or the tallest building in North America is also going up on 8th Avenue, at Broadway, and just east of that was 157, which is another of the tallest buildings in North America. On 2nd Avenue, there's another one, higher than 50 stories. Let me just say that in the past year or two, 57th Street's been under siege, and we've felt it. In fact, I went to elementary school on the street. I've watched the changes, I've never complained about them until now, because it's pretty much out of hand, and this project is unsustainable. They've listed at least 18 significant, permanent adverse impacts on our city, particularly in our community, where we're going to nearly double Manhattan's estimated annual population change on one street. That's frightening to the people who live around there, and it should be frightening to you, because you're going to have to respond to it. So ultimately, we know that we're going to be limited, we won't have enough school seats. Their environmental impact statement, we found evidence that it was inaccurate and not thorough. They didn't do a volume over-capacity study, which I think is common with a building like this, to determine what influence it's going to have or impact it will have on the intersections. So they did admit in their unavoidable adverse impact section that it'll be at least 13 intersections along 57th Street. They said that they would have a significant adverse impact on the bus lines, that 57 and 31 bus. They also said they would have a significant impact on street crowding, and I took a picture the other day of people coming from 58th Street subway station, and it was inundated, you couldn't walk in the other direction. They admitted to many, many significant negative impacts, but most notable are how they underestimated the number of seats available for schoolchildren. So I'm hoping that the Department of Education will act proactively now, so that when those children do come into the building, we're ready for it. They said that they would have 140 students from more than 1,000 apartments, over 40% of which will be two and three bedrooms. That's a ridiculous estimate, isn't it? Four, over 400 two and three bedrooms are going to have 100 kids? That's not sensible. So we're going to need a school. And as far as the subway and the Department of Transportation are concerned, putting in that middle light on 57th Street didn't make the traffic any better, and it's at a standstill most of the time. I spoke with Eric, oh, I don't want to get his name wrong, I'm sorry, I can look it up, but I don't always time, from, you know, New York Prepares, where they prepare New Yorkers for any kind of emergency or catastrophic event, and 57th Street is regarded as the main artery of our city. If people can't get to and from the east or west to the West Side Highway, that's a major means of progress for people when it's time to try to get to the river and get out, if necessary. It's very close to the water, they can adhere to the open space requirements of 2.5 acres per 1,000 people. They're going to do a 22-foot curb cut approximately 100 feet from the West Side Highway entrance. So that's got to affect the Department of Transportation as well. If you're going to have about 3,000 people from this building, over 500 cars coming and going within 100 feet of the West Side Highway entrance and exit, that's going to be very troublesome.
Just to add to that, in addition, there are going to be about 2,000 people from the building--
Across the street.
--directly across the street that are going up in the new paramed building.
Yep, so, this, I can't see how this project was approved, but because it was recently, well, it may still not be approved, but it has been recommended, and that disturbs me. I just would hope to hear from you about what you would propose to do about it.
With regard to the Department of Buildings, we look at plans having to do with all those buildings that you've mentioned. When plans are looked at, what we go by is, one, zoning, what zoning regulation allows, if the zoning, it goes in terms of the height and the bulk and those sorts of things, and then--
They've requested the lowest possible manufacturing M15 to go to a C47, which is the-- is the highest possible. And because they added some affordable units, they're going to get an increased floor-to-ear ratio, the highest possible. In fact, we have a study that we submitted to the city council members that shows that there's been a precedent set in the past 15 years, no one's ever received or received what they're asking for, which is the highest possible. I figured 12.
So the short, the short end of the, of the answer to resolving it is change the zoning, and then the Department of Buildings will have to abide by that zoning. We have to allow the applicant as-of-right development, which is whatever--
This is not as-of-right. It did apply for a zoning change, and Helen--
That's what--
If it's not as-of-right--
--did get the zoning change.
--then they go to BSA, and then BSA makes the decision.
So, Jessica, you should also know that I'm speaking with my colleagues now and with some people in City Hall about putting together two, two, exploring how we can get together two working groups. One that's going to look at the EIS and the Seeker and, and acknowledge the faults and think about what we need to do to change that. I, I'll be honest with you, I'm, I'm very anxious to see the mayor's housing plan, which is going to come out tomorrow. I, I'm not confident it's going to help us in this regard, and, but I'm determined to see what we can do anyway. Secondly, putting together a working group that works closely with your community, in addition to Community Board four and, what is it, five, that's Midtown, the one right over? And with the council members to talk about how the city is going to deal with the impact. And Department of Education has assured me that we can sit down very quickly and talk about the need for a school. I would estimate we need at least a three-section pre-K through eight, right in that area, and it's going to be a matter of finding the location.
I'd like to talk a little bit about PS 191.
Yeah.
Just to throw out some statistics, 16% of the kids there passed the state math exam compared to 30% city average. 13% only passed the state English exams compared to city average of 26. It's very low bars, and they're absolutely failing them. 46% of the teachers there claim bullying's a problem compared to a 20% city average. These are just unconscionable numbers, and I think as adults, we're all failing our children when we allow this to happen. I mean, this isn't just a minor failure, it's an abysmal failure of the future of the city. If we can't educate the future children of the city, we all might as well just move to New Jersey.
No, please, no. Turn to that.
I want to ask, I mean--
PS 191 is the real problem.
People are moving, PS 191 is a failure. What are we doing to fix this?
Yeah.
What dramatic, drastic actions are we doing when our kids are stuck going there and we're failing the kids that are there today?
You know, and it's interesting, with 191, they did get the magnet grant, although I think that's since run out. And, is that right, Eric?
They don't need kids going to the museums when they can't read.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm, I'm with you 100%. I think that is the school that needs attention in this district.
Happy to sort of come on the school level and have conversations about--
Thank you.
--ways we can identify to make it better. Something that I'm blessed I get to do with the chancellor regularly is do school walkthroughs. We've been on over 35 across the five boroughs, and I've been able to, and she's training teams of folks to be able to look to, at a school and what is evidence of school culture and school climate and evidence of learning and writing across content areas. That's the blessing of having her as a real educator at the helm of our large ship. So I would be more than happy, and I know Ben would, and I mean, we have a bunch of other folks who'd be happy to, to work with you to talk specifically about the data. I'm sure, as you've heard, you know, the mayor and the chancellor, you know, challenge the premise of what the tests all mean, right? Does that mean that just because we're not doing well in tests, that there's no learning, evidence of learning going on? So I think that with education, because it's so personal, you know, we have to take it on a case-by-case basis.
How many folks up there, raise your hand, would you say, "I'm going to pull my kid out of my current school, and I'd rather have them go to 191"?
Eric Schuffler, I'm the PTA president, PS 199, right next to 191, and I'm the community board's seventh co-chair of education. We were the ones who started the original thing on the primary day voting. I just want to, there's a sense of urgency among the PTAs and the school principals around this primary day voting that I hope you'll take seriously. On the Beacon issue, it was a year ago that we passed a resolution--
Yeah.
--to CEC and the community board. There's been a year and a half of community hearings. We have a 900-space school opening up in our neighborhood. This is unprecedented. It is an opportunity that the administration cannot go to waste. It is a huge victory waiting to be taken, but it needs a heightened sense of, of urgency from the administration to seize it, or this will fail, and it will be something we will never get a second chance at.
And, and Eric, just to be clear, what you mean is that in the, the issuance of the middle school, the book that lists all the middle school options, we're worried because it might not make it in there.
If this school doesn't have a leader and isn't in this book, when the current fourth graders start looking, no one will go there, and it will fail, and we will all be ashamed. But I, you know, I just want to say that--
Well, I just want to explain what the heightened sense of urgency means. Sorry, Sadie, we were gonna--
I, I just, I think that it is getting listed in the middle school book. Last I heard, it was going to. But, good news is that we find this work thrilling, and actually, we are, it's a huge mayoral initiative, not just our own--
It's a great opportunity.
--personal thing about community schools and building community schools. And so Ben and I are on a couple teams across the borough, but I'm on a couple more teams across the city on the building and creation of community schools, and it's a fascinating process, and we want to be deeply involved.
Just so people know, the K-Connect, you put your address in online, you don't actually have to show proof of it till you show up at school to take a spot. It used to be you had to show proof of address in order to even get in the system, so you've basically given people a chance, not you, excuse me, I don't want to, it's the system, a chance that people put whatever address they want in, get in the system, and then find an address. So take care of that.
Big work.
Steve, at some point, I'd like to sit with you and talk about our playground. We don't have to do it now, but I know I've had a lot of parents come to me about improving it, so that's my spiel.
Thank you. Thanks for coming, Eric.